Order, whatever you want to do. Please. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, here's the rule call, Mr. Dawson.
Air report?
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
Trustee Shorty has been excused. Trustee McColby.
Here.
Trustee Tremblay has been excused. Superintendent Sullivan.
Yeah.
Deputy Clerk Barkum.
Here.
Thank you very much. Up leaving for the board members who are here this evening. They have a copy of the last minutes of our board meeting. Will there be any corrections or additions to these minutes? And if not, could I get a motion to have them accepted as written? Motion, trustee Connor. Second trustee McColby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. At this time, we're open to the public. As I see, I believe we are here alone again this evening. Just a reminder to all the people that do watch this, that these board meetings are open to the public. And if you feel you want to come, you should come and see how your village board members are working. Thank you. Mayor's report. Superintendent Sullivan, we're going to bring up a bad thing again, but I just need to hear an answer on our grant funds. Have you had any response from either FEMA or CMO?
They said three or four weeks.
They said three or four weeks.
He was ready to submit them to CMO, to FEMA. CMO was ready to submit it to FEMA, then they come back to CMO, then they go to the audit system, then they come to us.
Well, thank you very much for that information. I'm sure that people were here wondering what's going on. As the general public might have read in the paper, we're having a zoning meeting March 18th. And again, I would like to interject that if anybody would like to come to it, it would probably be in their best interest to happen, to see what's going on, to interject what they might want. Dr. Lamb is going to be here. He is working with the village to set up our new zoning law system. Like I said, any participation from outside would be greatly appreciated. Now, I'm going to bring up another issue about the zoning laws. Mr. Lamb hasn't informed us that they could have this put on disk.
That's the map you mean?
The maps.
Using the program.
Using a program, which I think might be very beneficial. The thing of it is, it's at a price tag of $1,200. I think what I'm probably going to do is ask Ms. Dawson if there's any way that the village could come up with that funding.
What is he putting on there?
He's going to be put...
We spoke of before when I originally got the computer, yeah, the final...
Zoning map of water sewer lines.
No, 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 no. It's the water sewer lines. You can overlay the same disk, the same program with everything else as well. The same program he used to put single-family homes. We don't own the program, though. He owns a program, or a ISRI that has it. And I have the, I think I have the name of it here. Art View. Then they can overlay, you can overlay any amount of things you want on this, once you have it there. You can say, put your streets on it, it's an overlay. Put trees on it, overlay, and it's an overlay. And it just, one layer lays over the other.
Because I think it's a program that, I know when I first came on, we wanted to get Superintendent Sullivan a computer. Because what has happened in the past, it's always been a piece of paper here, a piece of paper there, and things get lost on a piece of paper. And over the years, I'm sure that there's been a lot of changes to them, and some of them may not have been put in. But if we have this kind of program, any adjustments can be made to it, and we can keep a better record of all our underground, as well as our zoning sections. I think it would be a better, I think it would be a better way to keep all the records that we do need in place, instead of a yellow piece of paper here and a white piece of paper there.
Or even our maps. Our maps get doggy.
You know, I would like some feedback from the board members on this, is, I think is what I'm getting at.
I think maybe it's a good idea, but I'd like to see it before we're going to, first of all, purchase anything like that. And...
Do you want to see a sample?
Demonstration, demonstration or something, sure. You can get the software and have, you know, have it up so we can take a look at it, see what it does.
That's right on your, you can get that on your own computer too, because of the address. If you want to see it.
Another thing is, who's going to input the data? Is it going to be us?
That's what he's going to do.
He's going to do that. But do we have all the appropriate data for him to put it on there? I know I'd asked about the water sewer lines. You said you don't really have everything.
I have pretty much everything. What I don't have, we can, we probably can add it after that. He's going to educate some, you know, a couple of us into what needs to be done to input it afterwards. Because at some point, you're going to have to be able to do it anyway.
Sure.
If you run a line here or run a line there.
And that's, that you should be able to know how to do it, or one of your people.
Yes.
Is the software compatible with what you have right now for PC?
Yes.
Make sure.
Yes. That's what's been the big holdup, is getting something that would be compatible, not too complex, not too wacko that, you know, people couldn't handle. This is a, in fact, the best time to quiz Dr. Lamb on that would be probably next Monday.
Well, I might be a little busy for that type of thing next Monday, with all the things going on. I would hate to slow that down with this type of question.
But I don't think it would be, I guess it could either give you a yes answer or no answer.
The other thing, I think, is software support. I mean, if we, part of the problems with the software itself, is there support out there?
Yes. Yeah, it's a major company. ISRI, RRI, I can give it out of four of the trades.
I'm just concerned that, yeah, okay, you got your initial investment, $1,200. Is this going to be something, each year you're going to be spending more money on the software or upgrading? And if you upgrade your PC, is it going to be compatible after that? You know what I'm saying?
I don't think I can answer all those.
I just, I just don't want to spend $1,200 now and then spend $1,200 next year and $1,200 a year after.
Well, I don't blame you.
Yeah, no, I understand that feeling entirely.
That was not my intention either. My intention was, because as everybody knows, there aren't any of us going to be here for a long time. And I think in the past, information has been misplaced or lost, or taken with individuals when they left. The new person coming on board has had to try and find out where things are, what's going on. I think we need to alleviate some of these problems. And even if we can just put in what we know at this time, will be better for somebody to be able to come back and put in a computer and get what information there is. But yes, I have your concerns. I believe your concerns.
It said the software is $1,200.
Mm-hmm.
There was a thing about the entry of the information.
He has a student that will volunteer to put it in.
Put it in. That's another thing. That's, that was another thing.
That's part of a program that he does.
Through the college.
It just so happens that this young gentleman lives in the village, in this village.
Well, yes, and we will probably end up asking more questions and looking for more answers before we...
Yeah, don't, you know, absolutely don't be afraid to leave something in my mailbox or email or anything. Anything you think of that I should ask for questions, tell me, so I'll do it.
I think, I think the whole idea is right on. I think we need to do something, you know, with keeping track of all this and archiving a lot of this stuff.
Right.
But we want to make sure that, like Chuck said, we don't want it to become an ongoing expense over here.
I don't doubt that you'll end up spending some kind of money for some sort of support. I don't know. But as far as it being compatible, it has been for, it's an older program. It's not a brand spanking new program. He didn't like the, he said the upgrades to this program were much more complex than what they needed.
But you've got to remember, after a while, support for the old version of the programs, there will be no support.
Starts to fade out very quickly.
So, if it's not supportable, we don't want it.
But I think Mr. Sullivan did actually get hold of Dr. Lamb and ask him those questions. I think he did actually...
I think I reached out to the company that were working.
Right. Any pertinent information on the program? Is there going to be support for the program, blah, 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 blah? And I think you can do that, just talking with Dr. Lamb. That would not, actually like Chuck, battle to end up being with our zoning meeting next one evening. Well, thank you very much for your input. And at this time, I'd like to have a motion made to have our organizational meeting April 1st at 6:30 PM. Do I get a motion to that effect?
I make the motion.
Motion made by trustee McColby.
Second.
Second trustee Connor. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I would like to have a motion made for our budget hearing April 8th at 7:00 PM. Motion trustee Connor, second trustee McColby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here you go. Thank you. And for this evening, that's all I have. Report trustee Connor?
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you trustee Connor. Trustee McColby?
A few things. Bob, I did go over and take a look at the clarifier cover. Took a look at that, it looks good. One concern I did have, and I did ask the mayor about this too, was that there doesn't seem to be any lights in there now?
No. The lights, the lights, there's lights in there today.
Oh, there is?
That weren't there. Well, you could, they had just put that up, and we had to cut down the posts.
The posts that was outside?
The posts that held the columns, that held the original lights.
Okay.
Because they were too tall for that. So, they've been cut down about 18 inches.
Oh, and then they put them back in?
And put them back up.
All right. Because I was concerned that in the dark, someone would go in there with no light.
Not a good point, yeah.
All right. So, that's been taken care of?
Yep.
Good. Also, let's see here. This correspondence about the miscellaneous supplies and used equipment to be sold in 16 separate lots, has that been itemized on a list someplace? I'd like to take a look at that.
Yeah. It is, and it hasn't, it went out there.
Went out there, it did. Right.
And...
Don't you think we should have got a copy of that?
I'm sorry, I thought you did.
Well, we didn't get a copy of it. I was just kind of curious as to what we were...
Shame on me on this one.
What we were...
Most of it didn't have anybody in mind.
I had a.
I had a copy that, but it was a written copy stating a late bidder.
Yeah.
And also, he said that, let's see, Ralph Cookman or John Paul or Bruce Bolt Wallet are going to get back to us?
Yes, and Ralph is back in town, so...
Oh, yeah?
Probably shortly, as quickly as he can, so it's not much of a...
I thought he was coming back in the eighth.
I had it on my calendar that if he was, you know...
Yeah.
To remind myself on the 18th, to make sure. But he's back in town now. He was here today.
There will be a meeting set up.
Try to, try to get it so that everybody is...
Just so we get in on the ground floor of everything that's going on.
Right.
And one other thing here, this correspondence, Janice, about Martin Gill, Bridging Associates, LPD, perma audit. What is that all about? Is this something that normally they come and do?
The deliver that I sent to them? Oh, yeah. I sent them, they're a firm that works for, and I gave them all the figures. They sent us back an audit, I reviewed it, and we left it in the roots of basement.
Oh, okay.
So, that's just a little telling them what it's something.
Oh, okay.
I have that with a pretty first turn, right?
All right.
In fact, we have the art back. I don't know what to say, but it's just basically, man, it's sounding amazing.
Well, that's, I was just curious.
That's kind of a weirdly thing to do.
Yeah, that was... All right. I think that's all I have.
Well, thank you trustee McColby. For our treasure.
All I have for tonight are the revenue expansion reports, but I have a copy of each of them. I also ran today the budget of the figures. I hope to have the new information, people can skim nearby in the weekend to hopefully ask somebody to do it.
And that will be forthcoming in our box. Because we were, I think everybody's probably kind of looking to see...
So am I.
Where we are and what we have, what we have created these last four weeks or five years. I think we all feel that way. Are there any questions on our revenues? Well, the person we're all waiting for. You know, if I'm still here in October 2004, I'm probably going to resign. Okay. The report of our superintendent, Mr. Sullivan.
I have my written report. We've got a few things.
I see we have a, I see we have an expensive, a list of, it looks like we have a lot of... Of course, the village knows that we have a lot of streets that need to be repaired. And I see you've made a pretty concise record of some of the streets.
Does everybody have that? Okay. But that was just some of the work that I thought we might be looking at to get done this.
It's called proposed work list for 2002, 2003?
2003, yeah.
Yeah. I don't think I brought one, because I would be discussing it.
Well, what I wanted to do was, in focus of the work that he put into it, I want to thank him for putting out a list of projects that the village might try to undertake this year if the funding is available. Sitting here and working through a budget that I think we need to do more of this. What would we like to do? Get feedback from the public, finding out, you know, what would you like to see the village try to attempt to do first? Get some figures on it and find out if we can budget for an item like this. I think from now on, if we're going to be doing a budget hearing, I think we need to have what they want to do, what their intentions are, the price of what they want to do, and see if we can put it in a budget. Not just do funding for maybe we might do this. I think we have to have a goal in place. And I just want to thank you very much for just doing some of the streets that we know have to. And one thing that we're finding out, when I was going through this and I was reading this, this is not a cheap undertaking.
Nothing there.
To redo streets, and I want to say that again to the people out there, it's a very expensive venture. All I want to do is, because I know you didn't, said you didn't have it, I just wanted to thank him for writing up a proposed list and throwing some figures with it and numbers that we as the board can make decisions on. So, that's more or less what I brought it up for, was just to thank you for that. And to any of the other department heads, if they plan on getting funding, I think they need to follow in suit to try and put it down on paper, make sure that it gets to the board members here, and we will see what we can do in our budget.
Well, I think we're a little beyond that, though, at this point.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I should have had that to you a month ago.
I'm just saying, in general, we're at the point where we've kind of pared down the budget to where it's, hopefully it's going to be, or close to where it's going to be, and not start adding stuff.
No, no.
Some of those things are doable anyway.
No, I'm just talking in general.
Right. My thought process to that was, this is going to be in our budgets coming. You know, we have to have some kind of guideline for us to go to. I know there's a lot of things that need to be done out there, but anybody that wants to have anything done needs to actually come up with it. Bring it up, put a price tag on it, not just say, I need this much money. Well, we need to know what you need this much money for. That's for any of the department heads that are out there. And now we're getting to the point where we don't have too many of them left. We've gotten rid of everything. Did I need to say that on TV? Yes, I did. I want to ask you about this one thing here. On Oak Street from Port, now, when I read this, I was really, really surprised at the amount of money. We're talking fee number 63 and talking fee number 64.
Right.
Fee number 63, $2,000.
That was in distress somewhat last year. It really is showing much more market. There'll be a few limbs on leave out this year, but not many. And I got a call on it, and the man was concerned, I guess, in the wires.
It's in the wires, wouldn't I say, be taking care of some of that?
Not necessarily. Sometimes they'll take care of maybe what's in...
They'll trim the ones that are affected.
Not in the wires.
Sure.
But as far as taking them down, not always.
They may. They may.
Well, we'll see if they will. You know, I just had to have something...
Right. Well, I'm sort of concerned about this, because if it is in the wires, I think yourself might need to get hold of NICE to have them come and look at it and see what they can do for the power issue on one side, because I'm sure that's going to affect a lot of homes up through there. If that's the case, I think NICE needs to be notified and have them come up. Bob, if you would please, give them a call and have the inspector come out and at least look at it. Because when I saw it, I said, oh boy.
I don't, now, with this program we had in the previous few years, some of that work was going to be taken care of?
We did some, we did a lot of it.
You said there was some distress in one of these trees before. Why wasn't it taken care of, I guess?
I guess we just tried to do other trees, and that one got soaked in between the cracks.
Yeah. And now the funding almost dropped.
Now the funding is gone.
Right, now the funding is gone.
The funding came too soon.
Actually, after the ice storm, yes.
Really, you know?
Yeah.
I was surprised we didn't have more stuff down after those ruins we had this past weekend. And I'm very happy that it didn't happen.
Some places did.
Right, some places it really did.
Yeah.
Well, you will...
I will go, I will talk with NICE.
Would you talk with NICE, please? And have them come up and look at that number 63, if there's anything that they can do to safeguard, safeguard the power lines for now. We can address this probably at a later date. That's it that I have for Superintendent Sullivan, this.
Nothing, no other questions on my report?
Well, I read your eight days of snow removal could have been, could have been 58, could have been 58 days. I thought that was very becoming this year.
And of course, I had to throw less paragraph in anyway.
How's the computer down?
They, oh, that's, thank you. He asked me if we could, he could buy a computer, I mean, a printer for that, so he could do his, because I didn't have a printer with me. I think they're available for around in the $80 range.
Yeah, there you, it all depends on what he wants to do.
He doesn't need anything...
I should have had it.
Yeah, you can get them right down.
Purchase, yeah, I should have had a purchase request in for that.
Right.
If you approve it, I'll put it in, and then, well, $30.
Not to exceed $100, because I think you can pick up an Epson sometimes for 50, 60 bucks.
Sure you can.
Yeah. Aye. Was it okay to do that, Mrs. Dawson? Can we do that ahead of time, you know?
I have to make a motion to give him authority to purchase up to...
Who should be purchasing, Bob?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll do it, Bob. And I have to make sure, while you'll get the software. To get a motion to have Superintendent Sullivan purchase a printer for the computer at the wastewater treatment plant, not to exceed $100.
I make the motion.
Motion trustee McColby?
Second.
Second trustee Connor? All in favor? Aye.
And that'll be just black and white? I mean, how many colors are there for that? Nothing colors on it?
Going as grass? Yeah. It's up to you.
I think you can still get one for under $100.
I know we can.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking of cartridges. You start doing colors, and cartridges get expensive.
But if you're going to do the graph, you should be able to do one line in red, one line in blue. I think he can still do that. At this time, I would like to have a motion made to close our general meeting and go to public hearing. Do I get a motion to that effect? And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Now, the object of a public hearing this evening is on local law for 2002 amendment of tax exemption for veterans. The local law to amend Article 3, Section 105-4 to increase exemption amount for real property taxes for all eligible veterans. Section 105-4 is hereby amended. Residential property shall be exempt for taxation pursuant to... Residential property shall be exempt for taxation pursuant to the provision of section four fifty-eight dash A, under real property law of the state of New York as follows. Wartime veteran, fifteen percent or twenty-seven thousand. Combat zone veteran, ten percent or eighteen thousand. Disabled veteran half upgrading or ninety thousand. Since there is no one from the public on this amendment. Open to the board members, is there anybody that has anything they'd like to say about this local law this evening?
I just, I just have one concern and I'm not, not in favor of, I just, people think about reduction in our tax base. I mean, I think this year we, we had a severe decrease in our tax assessment for, for the village and just something to think about. We can't just keep decreasing that tax base year after year and putting the burden on all of the taxpayers. Another thing, I, I'd like not to vote on this tonight because there's so few members here, I'd like to have the full board here to vote on it. Do we have time?
Well, we gotta go.
Yeah, because we have to be tasked by, yeah, we have time.
Well, we're going to have to go out of this public hearing into the general session so we can, we can continue with the thing and bringing it on to. Right, okay. Do I get a motion to close the public hearing and go back into regular session?
I make that motion.
Trust, uh, motion made by trustee McCollough, second by trustee Connor, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Now, the local law on exemptions, at this time, it's the opinion of the board that we table this matter until our next meeting, until we have a full board to vote on this and obtain some pertinent tax information. Is that, that's more or less what we're looking at. Trustee Connors, trustee McCollough. Okay, then. So that is, we will table this until our eighth meeting. Okay, then. Thank you, trustee McCollough, trustee Connor. Now, we're back in general session and are we done with Superintendent Sullivan? And? Yes. Okay, Mr. Dawson, can we have a correspondence, please?
Yes. Item one is correspondence from Ann Bono requesting hating of Patricia Wayne.
Just in relationship to this, this letter, and I mentioned to Superintendent Sullivan before the meeting that there was also another resident that joins that street and there is a concern about the culvert on that one corner.
On that corner.
And we just want to take a look at that when, when the frost gets out of the ground, make sure, things may come back. If not, this, this is another issue that would go along with that.
I'm not even as nervous about the, the bus on that street as I am the tractor trail that brings the food there.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, it's a lot heavier than that bus.
Yeah, you're right. Which we were told one time they weren't going to.
They were never going to do that.
Right.
That's right.
And maybe we should have a letter go to them that they, you know, they can't have tractor trails going down there. I mean, it's, it's causing damage to the street and it has over the years. And, you know, I, I remember way back when, there wasn't going to be any heavy vehicle traffic.
It's in writing. I know it is because I looked it up.
We discussed that because our, that was a nice, a decent years ago.
Yes. So.
Okay, but we will be looking at that this spring anyways.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item two is correspondence from the Clinton County Highway Department regarding road striping.
I put in a request to have two streets down Elm and Church.
Yeah.
That'll be the sidelines and centerlines and the stop bars on all the approaching streets to them.
Let's see that.
Did we do Elm Street a few years back?
We have every year but last year.
So we do it every year?
Yeah. They do it with a latex paint. You can no longer use.
Yeah, I know.
An oil-based paint for that, so it doesn't.
But that gets expensive year after year having.
Yes, it does. I mean, if, if you tell me not to, if that's.
No, I'm just concerned that, you know, it's just money that's every year we spend and it's, maybe there's another solution, that's all. I don't know. I'm just asking. I'm sure.
There's the type of striping they used out here in the street, but it has to be put down after it's paved out on Main Street. Has to be done after it's freshly paved, has to be done during hot weather and it's very expensive. I think you can go ten or fifteen years.
What do other communities do in their village streets? I mean, you, you go to other villages and they don't have striping on every street.
No, we don't.
I know we don't, but I'm just saying, is it, do we have to have it? Can, can we go every other year as compared to every year? I haven't looked at it, but I'm just, just looking to save money.
Well, maybe that's just an issue that maybe we want to do this summer, just think about that before it's done and then, you know, give me direction for the following.
I guess, I guess I'll take a look at, see what's there now.
You know, if we've ordered it already for this, I've done it already for this year. I didn't do it last year, but right now is a pretty good idea of what it's like after two years. Maybe that's what we want to do is every other year.
All right. Yeah, we can take a look at it.
And, you know, make a judgment call from that.
Yes, thank you.
Item three is notice of chip's going to the department presentation. Item four, what is wastewater treatment, like construction report from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation.
From what I see, we, we did quite well on our report.
Mm-huh.
That's good.
Item five is a notice of the meeting regarding the updating of our zoning law on March eighteenth, two thousand two at seven P M. And it was people that were happy with this notice. Item six is notice of the issuance of a liquor license at sixteen Cedar Street, just for our records. Item seven is the election notice which has been posted and published. Election is next Tuesday.
Yeah, if I may interject, uh, the election polls will be open, I believe, from noon until nine next Tuesday, which will be the nineteenth. So if everybody could, they could come out and vote. Thank you very much.
Item eight is correspondence and posters from the Lake Champlain Basin Program.
I'm not going to get no posters.
Item nine is a request for support from the Port of Excellence in Champlain.
Okay, I read this over now. From what I can, from what I can see on this, it is, they seem to be putting quite a bit of emphasis on GSA. Everybody has read this that's on, on the board right now?
Yeah.
I would like to, to know what, what their flavor is on this. Because I, I think it, it warrants some kind of response. I know that they're talking about this Port of Excellence and, and we know it's going to come in, into play because there's enough people on, on the, on the bandwagon now to make it happen.
Basically, they're just, they're looking for.
Support.
Support from not only the municipalities, but individuals. I, I'd like probably to make a motion that we send letters to the four parties.
Indicated on the sheet.
Indicated on the sheet in a letter. In our support of the, uh, construction of the.
That way in Port of Excellence.
Right.
Right. And the sooner the better. Could that be done, Mr. Dawson? I think it should be taxed.
Yeah, they said taxes.
Right.
Second, I mean, motion, I'll second that motion.
Okay, then. I, uh, should make the motion that we, we get in touch with these individuals on our feelings and it was the second item by trustee McCollough, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I was quite concerned when I read that.
Item ten is correspondence and negative declaration from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation regarding all entry control.
Yeah.
And that's all there is for correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson. We're to all business and number one is street signs requested. I think in your report it was stated debt.
We dealt with the ones that didn't need posts.
Right. Because I believe that Neil had asked for, for some speed limit signs and what have you.
Yeah, there was a, a request to post speed limit signs within the entrances to the village of Champlain and a few other places, as, as was discussed, I think at our last meeting. State law doesn't require speed limit signs within the village on streets, just at the entrances.
Right.
To the village and I think that's all we feel will be necessary at this point. And I believe those were addressed.
Yes, they were.
We've got, we've got a couple still that need either posts or things need to be straightened and we have to wait until frost is out of the ground again. It's not that much in there, but there's enough to.
It's just not.
Stop us from doing.
But this is sight of it, that's all.
Right. That, that was my thought on it and let's not lose sight of it as soon as we can. And I'm sure you put that on your task force, your work list, okay? Thank you. Oh, second item in all business is our emergency generator grant. You were stating that you have gone out to bid?
No, no, I have a, I have a bid spec and I, I failed to copy it for everybody. It'll be in here as a spec and a notice and I just wanted you to review it, if you would, if I could review it and see if it needs anything and.
I, I don't think it needs anything. It's, we're looking for a generator to power this.
Right. When we do this, we're going to have to build a room in there and, and take a piece out of the wall.
Right, to vent it.
To vent it.
Yes.
I mean, be aware of that, that's.
But, but I'm saying, at that little inconvenience, taking us, a very small section of that garage.
It's going to be.
Yeah, to contain this building to be sold.
How big is it going to be?
It's fifteen.
Fifteen KVA.
Physical size? I really don't have an answer for that yet. But it's going to be in a, one of those silent containment heels so that it's, if we're running now, you would hear.
So like a trailer type thing that it's.
Oh, no. Oh, it'd be permanent.
It's going to be permanent.
In fact, that's part of the deal, it can't be, it can't be mobile.
No.
It has to be.
It will stay right with the premise.
Mm-huh.
Stay right to the premise.
I think we need a physical size on this thing so we can make plans.
Well, I will, when I find out who's going to get the bid, then I'll get.
All right.
I can get one of these.
You need a cement platform or something to sit down and attach it to.
Right.
And they'll have, they'll have to be in a two O, fire rated wall, all that sort of thing. In other words, cinder block.
Yeah, cinder block.
And it has to be.
But it will not be portable, it will stay right here. It'll be a, a portion in the garage out in the back when you go out, it'll be on the left-hand side.
It's going to be handy to the, it's got to be handy to the.
Main service.
The main service is what comes in.
Yeah. So that's it for our, we're going to go out to bids on that. Okay, new business. Is there any new business to brought, be brought before the board this evening?
Yeah, we received something, I guess it was today's mail. I just, just had a question, a letter from a Williams Smith concerning, I'm assuming it's to do an analysis of our insurances and try and come up with quotes or bids for our insurance for the, which we did years ago. I don't know when the last time this was done, two years ago?
Two years ago. Oh, yes, Cleveland, two days.
So I just, I just saw they have this letter and we probably won't be doing it this year, but maybe keep it in mind for another year. And I guess what we need is maybe some kind of cost for what this would be and think about for maybe for next year's budget.
Right.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business to come before the board? Well, we have a purchase recs here for, uh, Justice Globe, one for a steno chair and one for a filing cabinet. Now, account balance of six eighty-five and we're looking at two.
Eight sixty-nine.
That was the balance that he has.
Sixty-four, yeah.
That's the balance he has in the account.
Yeah, it's going to be two fifty-nine ninety-eight.
It's two fifty-nine ninety-eight. Um, two fifty-nine, that'll leave better than, that'll leave better than six hundred in the account. Can I get a motion to approve these purchase requisitions this evening?
Second.
Motion by trustee Connor, second by trustee McCollough, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there any other new business?
I just have something I noticed, just, just to bring up and it's not necessarily for us, but it's supposed to be passed along to maybe the fire chief or the fire commissioners if somebody. There's a grant offered by the U.S. Department of Agriculture for loans for federal fire rescue ambulance program and at a low interest rate. I don't know what they're doing now, but I just thought maybe this is something, this information is something they may want to look at. So do they have, they have a boxer? Did somebody just pass that along to them?
No, I don't know.
Maybe I should circle it, but it's great on that.
I know he's working on several things.
Right, they are.
I'm also doing new maps and everything for the ISO.
I see that.
Is there any other new business?
Now, we, the village has got them as we were supposed to do, charging the fire department for water, water and sewer. That was supposed to be a minimum charge.
Right.
It was never initiated.
Which goes back to.
June, June last year, I believe.
No, it was just officially turned out and this.
Or whenever it was officially turned out.
So you actually probably missed, if we add them to our April first bill, I know it would be perfect.
Okay, because we were, I think we set a, a yearly fee of five hundred dollars, I believe it was. It was the minimum. It was a minimum, I think of one twenty-five every three months.
Every quarter, I think.
Oh, every quarter.
Every quarter, yeah, same thing.
Every quarter would make it five hundred dollars, I believe.
So how far back? You say it was last fall. You say it was last fall. I think that's at least two billing periods, correct?
Well, the thing of it is, I don't think that it... We didn't actually get all that paperwork signed until this year.
And really, everything has been still ongoing even as late as the first of the year. So even if we've started with... We could do January, but definitely just do the April billing.
I think it's the April billing. I think, because the transition hadn't really gone all... We were still in a transitional phase. I would, I would drop a letter to the fire district commissioners and tell them that they will probably be getting a bill for water and sewer at a hundred and twenty-five dollars per quarter. And I believe that was an original agreement for five hundred dollar a year, which that would be four, yeah, would be five hundred dollars. I think they can look into their original agreement. And if you drop that line to them, they'll know it's coming. Is there anything else? If not, we have... We have the warrant in front of us. Now, there's nothing that needs to be added to it this evening?
Yes.
Oh, we do, okay. Yes, we do.
I have two bills, thirty-five dollars each, and that was for our elected inspectors for registration day on Saturday. Seventy dollars for both. And then I have one here for the Lake Placid Resort. It was a room accommodation for Bob while he was attending the Norman and running that code enforcement training for a hundred and twenty-two dollars. That's all I have.
Hundred and ninety-two dollars? Hundred ninety-two dollars added to the mortgage this evening? Well, it's an awful thing. It's so expensive to be smart all the time. Do I have a motion to add a hundred and ninety-two dollars to this evening's warrant? By Trustee Connor?
Second.
Second, Trustee McCauley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So do I have a motion to pay the whole warrant this evening?
I make that motion.
Motion, Trustee McCauley?
Second.
Second, Trustee Connor. All in favor? Aye. Now, I hate to say this, but could I get a motion for adjournment? Motion, Trustee Connor?
Second.
Second, Trustee McCauley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very...